Good evening, folks. It's 7:00 PM. So I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order for the Board of Education. And the first item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. The next thing is approval of the minutes, and I would entertain a motion to approve the August 13th meeting minutes.
So moved.
Motion made by Paula. I get a second? Brendan?
Second.
Second from Alicia. Thank you. Is there any discussion on the minutes? I know Brendan had noted that we needed to make a correction.
Correct. I was not in attendance at that meeting, so that seems to be corrected.
Right. So Lauren said she corrected them before tonight's meeting. So is there anything else? If not, would all those in favor of approving the minutes please indicate so by raising your hand? Abstentions? Okay. Motion passed. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment? Okay. Seeing none online and hearing none, we'll move into the Board Chair's report. I just want to note that we have Mark Doyle with us online tonight. Thank you, Mark. And we're expecting Ilda Rae to join us tonight. We also have an absence from Katina Caban Owen, who has a family matter and sadly could not make it here tonight. I know, Mr. Dolphin, she really wanted to meet you, but she'll get another chance. I also want to acknowledge that last Tuesday, the Board of Ed, I mean, the Town Council approved the appointment of a new board member to the Wyndham Board of Education, Mia Matoma, who is filling the seat vacated by Dionne C. Torres. Dionne C. unfortunately had to step down from the board, and under the rules, the party that that person represented has the option of appointing a new member. So the Green Party appointed a new member, Mia, to the board. She said she was going to be here with us tonight, so hopefully she'll show up. She isn't sworn in yet, so she couldn't have sat at the table, but I'm assuming she'll be sitting at this table for her next meeting, and I hope that when people meet her, they'll extend her a warm welcome. It's a pretty daunting thing to come onto a board for just a few months before elections, and she'll have a steep learning curve, but I'm sure we can all work to get her up to speed. And then I want to thank Lauren for pulling together the little reception we had before this meeting, the meet and greet with Raymond Dolphin and his lovely wife. I can't remember your first name. Okay. And I want to acknowledge that you put some work into that. Thank you, Lauren. And I have some great news to share with the public. The board knows this, but our new superintendent, Dr. Iris Gomero, received notification this week that she has been nominated by the Latino de Oro Organization as one of the 50 outstanding Latinos for 2025. Let's give her a hand. We're proud and happy to have her with us, and she will be celebrated at a statewide event on October 9th, and she sent those details to the board members. I hope that we can, or they will, or we can, do some sort of a press release in the local media so we can get some coverage of that here. But so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And then I'm just going to hand it on to you, Dr. Gomero, to give the superintendent's report. We have a light agenda tonight. When we met last week to talk about the agenda, we just decided it's first week of school. There's a lot going on last week of summer for a lot of people, and we're going to probably have heavier agendas as we move into September and have some more working sessions and workshops and things of that sort incorporated into our meetings. But I'm going to hand it over to you now. Do we want to move that up on the agenda? Okay. Okay. I would entertain a motion to move up Item 8A, Discussion of the Chief Financial Officer Position, on the agenda, and then also, along with that, immediately following, Item 9A for action on that item. Could I get a motion to do that?
So moved.
Motion made by Brendan.
Second.
Seconded by Paula. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Welcome, Ilda. I see you're with us. Thanks. I will now proceed to call on you, Dr. Gomero, to kick off the discussion of our action tonight on the position of a new financial officer for the district.
Thank you, Board Chair Ayed. We knew that it was very important to find the right person to serve as the Chief Financial Officer for Wyndham Public Schools. That's why we engaged in a very rigorous process. I interviewed multiple individuals. We had the top candidates do a performance task, and we also received feedback from district leaders and other stakeholders. This careful approach has given us great confidence in our choice, who is here tonight, Mr. Ray Dolphin, who brings both financial expertise and a deep understanding of education, and I am proud to introduce him tonight by sharing his bio. Raymond Dolphin brings a unique blend of financial expertise and educational leadership to his role as Chief Financial Officer or Associate Director of Finance and Operations, as it is known for the charter of Wyndham Public Schools, with nearly two decades of professional experience spanning school administration, instructional leadership, and financial services. Mr. Dolphin has built a career on driving operational excellence, fiscal accountability, and improving student outcomes. Before transitioning into education, Mr. Dolphin served as an Assistant Vice President at People's United Bank, where he consistently exceeded performance goals while managing complex budgets, regulatory compliance, and customer-centered financial services. His background in financial management and banking provides a strong foundation for leading fiscally sound and equity-driven school finance operations. In addition to his finance career, Mr. Dolphin has held multiple roles in public education, from classroom teacher to his most recent position as an educational leader in Manchester Public Schools. There, he supervised staff, oversaw budgets, and implemented innovative programs that improved student outcomes and earned national recognition. This combination of fiscal discipline and educational insight uniquely positions Mr. Dolphin to align Wyndham's financial strategies with our mission of ensuring that all students have equitable access to resources or learning conditions that would lead them to success. Mr. Dolphin earned a Bachelor's of Arts from West Lian University and has a Master of Arts in Teaching from the University of St. Joseph. He holds certification in Intermediate Administration and Supervision, which is the O92, and in School Business Administration, as of yesterday, his OA5. We are excited to welcome Raymond Dolphin to Wyndham Public Schools and look forward to the leadership, accountability, and vision he will bring to his role.
Thank you. Ray, you can come on up to the mic. You have to press it so that the green light is showing. And why don't you introduce yourself and if you'd like to share some comments with us, and then we'll open it up to questions and discussion from the board.
Thank you very much, Chairman Ayed, Dr. Gomero, and to all of the board members. It's a pleasure to have gotten to know you guys just a little bit before we were here. I've had the distinct honor and pleasure to know Neil and Kimberly and some other folks that are working at Central Office, and I've just been just humbled just by the warm welcome, the kindness of the folks in this district, and I can't wait to become a full partner in this team. So I guess tonight marks that official night, and I'm looking forward to actually starting on Tuesday, being in the office and working hand in hand in partnership so that we can collectively provide the students of Wyndham with the most phenomenal educational experience that's out there in the state. So that's pretty much all I have to say, but I'm open to answer any questions about my background or me personally to anyone in the audience.
Do you want to introduce your wife to us?
Absolutely.
Have to come up unless you want her to, but she is here to support you tonight, so.
So my wife is the most wonderful person in the world. That's just facts. It just is what it is. But my wife is Leander Dolphin. She is the managing partner of Shipman and Goodman Law Firm. She's an absolute brilliant person, super successful, but again, just the most warm-hearted individual that I've ever met in my life, and I love her dearly, and I love you, honey. So.
Thank you for joining us tonight, Leander. Does anybody have any questions or comments they'd like to make? Paula?
After reading your bio, as I said earlier, I am amazed at you cover all the bases, and we're so proud and fortunate to have you join our team.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate that, and I'm looking forward to meet. I know we have a few board members that I can't meet in person. I do see you on camera.
Mark and Ilda are online. They're up there on the screen.
So it's a pleasure to meet you virtually, and I'm looking forward to meeting you in person as well.
Any other comments? Questions?
I'd like to say welcome aboard. Yes, that's a very impressive bio, and I would also like to wish your wife well on this journey with us. And Dr. Gomero, I would like to say congratulations, and we're looking forward to working with you, Dr. Dolphin. Thank you.
Thank you, Ilda. I had the pleasure of being part of the interview team for the finalists, and I just want to say that I'm really looking forward to you bringing your people skills to this position because it is a daunting task to be able to build confidence in a public school budget with members of the public and other town bodies, and I think it will be very helpful for the superintendent and the rest of our whole team, Central Office team, as well as the staff of Wyndham Public Schools and the Board of Ed, working together with you to get out into the community and educate and engage people into what goes behind all the numbers in a budget. I think that's a really important thing that we need to do moving forward, and I think it was clear in the interview and the way in which you answered the questions that you have what it takes to bring energy and just innate understanding of how to help people understand things that are sometimes difficult for them to understand and talk about it in a way that will make people comfortable. So I really noticed that in the interview, and it very much impressed me.
Thank you very much, Chairman Ayed. I really appreciate that, and we're looking forward to, like you said, getting out to the community and really showing the community that, you know, this is our budget. This is not the school's budget or the board's budget, but this is what's going to help all of our students and by extension, everybody in Wyndham. So looking forward to that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to say anything? Okay. So we did, for Mia, welcome. I introduced you before you came here tonight, saying you would be here tonight. We're looking forward to having you sitting up here with us next time around, but we've jumped up on the agenda. We moved up Discussion of the Chief Financial Officer Position and Action on that to earlier on in the agenda. Okay? So with no further ado, I would entertain a motion for approval of Raymond Dolphin as the Chief Financial Officer for the district. Actually, under Town Charter, it actually has to be called publicly, like when? Associate Director of Finance. Associate Director of Finance and Operations. Okay. The motion was made by Ilda. Do I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mark? Well, that's good. It's coming from the Chair of the Finance and Audit Committee. So is there any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion on the floor to appoint, I mean, to approve Ray Dolphin, Raymond Dolphin as our Chief Financial Officer, please indicate so by raising your hand. I see Ilda and Mark's hands are up. It's unanimous. Congratulations. We'll see you in the district next Tuesday. And if you don't want to stick around for the rest of the meeting, that's fine with us, but we're happy to have you. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. We're going to jump back up on the agenda to the superintendent's report.
You can go to the next slide, please. If we can move on to the next slide? Thank you. So we begin the 2526 school year. I am excited to share our theme, weaving our future together. This reflects our commitment to honor the rich history of Wyndham while working side by side with our families, staff, students, and the community to ensure that every student has a sense of belonging, is able to grow, and rises to meet rigorous expectations. Just as the strands in our theme graphic connect every school, our collective efforts create the strong fabric that supports the success of every child in Wyndham Public Schools. You can go on to the next. This year's focus, our work is anchored in three priorities that are essential to student success. We have discussed these not only at our retreat with the board, as well as with the Cabinet and our leadership team, and as we did our professional learning today and this week with the teachers and the rest of the staff, we have highlighted these as well. So first, daily attendance. Every day matters for learning. Our message is clear. Every thread counts, and students need to be in school every day. Second, challenging and supportive instruction. We have been working on ensuring that all students are going to be engaged in great level content that is standards-driven, and we will definitely make sure that we're supporting students and providing the necessary scaffolds so that every single student can succeed. And third, making sure that our schools are welcoming and safe. Every student deserves to feel included, respected, supported, and in an environment where they can thrive. So these are going to be the three areas that we will be focusing on as a school district. I'll pause to see if you have any questions or observations.
I don't see any hands, so you can keep going.
We can go on to the next slide. We have already had a very strong start to the school year, and the energy has been incredible. We had, on August 19 through the 21st, we welcomed our new employees with an orientation. On the 23rd, families and the committee joined us for our expo. On the 25th, which was this past Monday, our staff came together to reaffirm our shared mission and kick off the school year during convocation. And this week, staff participated in professional learning. They had an opportunity to set up their classrooms and also got ready, or we are getting ready and got ready because we are welcoming our students tomorrow. We're prepared to welcome our students tomorrow, the 28th, which is our first day of school. And if you just go into the next slide, I just have some pictures. Here are some pictures of the Family and Community Expo. And also, if you go on to the next one, this was for Convocation 2025. We took a picture of the entire staff outside in the field. In the next slide, we have some pictures of convocation. And as you can see, and some of you were at these events, they were not only well-attended, but they were also very successful. We can see in the pictures, they reflect the excitement, dedication, and commitment of our community to weaving a stronger future together. It was really an inspiring event, especially convocation. We have received positive feedback from all stakeholders, and we really set the tone to start a strong 2025 school year. Any observations or questions?
I have a request. I was at the convocation, and I think because there were only a few of us who had the time and availability to join that morning, it would be very nice if you could share your speech that you gave with the full board and also the trivia questions. I have to confess, I don't know how well I would have done on some of those trivia questions, but it was really fun to see the trivia questions. The speeches were lovely, too, and the band was. Wasn't the band great? Yeah, the band was great.
Yes, absolutely. I'll definitely share my speech with the board and the trivia questions and some pictures. I'll share some folder with pictures as well. You can go on to the next slide. We've also been closely monitoring enrollment. This is our historical enrollment data. It provides an important insight into the trends by grade, by subgroup, and by school. The slide that you have in front of you is by grade level. I'll give you a minute to just take a look at it. You can see that the column in green is our current numbers as of last week, and we do anticipate that these numbers will change, and we'll report back to the board closer or after October 1st. But we do expect some movement of numbers.
Does anybody have any questions or comments on that? Is the kindergarten number difference related to sort of the settling out of the law change where last year we had a difference because some kids couldn't come in because they weren't five yet, and now this year sort of where everybody's on level footing on that front?
Yes, we did have last year, as it happened across Connecticut with the change in the entry date for kindergartners, we did see decreasing numbers for students who were able to enroll last year, and you see them reflected back in this year's numbers.
Yeah, for the high school, I see that every grade is lower in a population or whatever for this year, at this point, anyway.
That is correct.
So it's not just that we have a smaller freshman class? We've lost students along the way or something?
Well, we do have students who also attend Phoenix Academy, and we do anticipate, we have a very transient population in Wyndham Public Schools, so we do anticipate these numbers changing. So we will have a clearer picture after October 1st, which is the number that gets actually reported to the state.
Anybody else? Well, it'll be interesting to see what they look like in another month.
Well, the big picture is that enrollment shifts will continue to impact, of course, class sizes, staffing, and resource allocation. As I mentioned, we do anticipate some changes by October 1st, and we'll keep the board informed. If you go on to the next slide, we have the enrollment by subgroup. Any questions or observations on the enrollment data by subgroup? In the next slide, we have enrollment data by school.
Does the yellow indicate anything different than the green?
It does indicate a smaller class size for the school year. I just want to highlight that the enrollment in the elementary schools is smaller because the fifth grade, of course, has moved to also to Wyndham Middle School. Any questions, comments?
I just want to encourage the board when they look at numbers or when they see information that's shared in board meetings, if you ever want to have more information and time to unpack any of what we see in these meetings at a future meeting, just please let me or Dr. Gomero know when we can plan on doing that. It may not be immediate. It may be when staff can pull together the information that we're asking for, but maybe after we see the October numbers, there may be some things that pop out at us.
Yes, we're definitely looking forward to continuing to monitor these numbers, and we'll report back after October 1st. We can go into the next slide, and I would like to ask Neil Weathers to come up to the podium to give us an update and great news regarding the Robert Hatted Cross Country Invitational.
So I'm really excited. I get to talk about running, as you know, but the Robert Hatted Cross Country Invitational is something that's a, it was a longtime tradition of the district that they used to have. It used to have many, many students participate, so it went away during the COVID years. So Zachary Knopka and the Athletics Department worked really hard to bring it back this year, so in September, in a couple of weeks, it will take place. It's going to start off with five teams from across the state, and the hope is to continue It's going to start off with five teams from across the state, and the hope is to continue every year and grow it. I'm hoping there eventually is also a staff race, I'm just saying. But they're hoping to grow it to a past capacity, so I'm pretty excited that they're doing this. And I thought it was worth the highlight, and obviously, there's a picture of the gentleman that the race is named after, who was honored recently at the Hall of Fame.
Any questions for Neil? Thank you. That's great. Okay, so that's it for the superintendent's report. And we're on to committee reports. The only committee we have a report on tonight is finance and audit. And Mark, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Sure, the hardest working committee on the board. The meeting was called at 6:02. The minister approved. We postponed discussion on the year-to-date budget because of the extraordinary amount of work that was being done at the finance office, getting in, ready for a state, state budget report, and obviously, the start of the new year. So we'll get the, those figures will be updated in October. I did note on a level that we can always adjust this agenda so that if we come across a situation where an item can't be discussed, we can always change it or note it so that we don't have to always have everything on the agenda that we're not prepared to do. Budget transfers were renewed, were reviewed, and primarily a result of changes to the staff due to different enrollment numbers and where people are needed or not needed. Also, the release of the federal grants that were for last year and that they were able to carry over. And Dr. Camaro reviewed which staff changes were made, so we have that information. We are going to recommend, the committee's recommending that the board approve budget transfers of $138,098. We discussed the status of the current year's budget, and we are still waiting action from the Board of Finance at that time, but waiting action for the town meeting that'll be held on the budget and the Board of Finance to make a final decision as to the status of our budget, whether it'll go to zero or have something in between there. The committee is also recommending to the Board of Ed as a whole that we continue with our fall sports programs at this point, and that we still hold out the possible need for making those adjustments in the winter and spring for middle school sports as well as possible clubs. Then we, leading up to the town meeting, Dr. Camaro and several committee members, we're going to have discussion with various Board of Finance members to see how, which way the wind blows in terms of affecting our budget and the need for, we're still looking for that $161,000 to help maintain the budgets at, at the level that we, the level we have to, I guess I should say, without having to have staff cuts or cuts to the sports programs. And that was it. We adjourned at 6:47.
Thanks. Does anybody have any comments or questions from Mark based on the report that he just gave? Mary?
Yeah, I mean, just reviewing the budget transfers, I, I guess I didn't realize a teacher's position had been eliminated at the high school. So I'm, you know, just a little bit.
Do you want some clarification on that?
Well, it says, I don't know what else they can say.
There is a memo in, in the board packet. The transfer number eight was 69,000, was a music, a music teacher position was reduced at the high school due to low enrollment. I don't know that there was actually a position that was changed or done away with.
Dr. Camaro's going to explain that a little bit more?
Yes, we did have an opening for a music position at the middle school, and we had a low enrollment at the high school. We had multiple music teachers at the high school. And so the, we offered, actually, we asked for volunteers to have someone move to the middle school, and we were able to find a teacher who volunteered to go over to the middle school. Therefore, that position was eliminated at the high school.
Any further questions? Okay, we're not taking action on the transfers until we get to action items, and we're going to have a little bit more conversation about the budget up next. So if there's not anything more, then I guess we'll wrap up committee reports, and we'll move on to item 8B, the budget update.
You can go on to the next slide, please. So we don't have a lot of information to share tonight in terms of the budget. We continue to operate under a 0% increase budget premise with still $161,000 gap. As we shared, the $304,000 in, give me one second. Yes, the $304,000 that we were, we're continue to hold was impacting our ability to be able to hold the middle grade sports, which is about 173,000. High school clubs for, that's about 37,000, and field trips, which is 94,000. So we have decided to move forward with middle grade, grade fall sports, which is at a cost of about $60,000. However, we, unless, again, we are able to secure the $161,000, we are still holding for winter and spring sports in the high school clubs as well at this point. The good news is that we are moving forward with fall sports.
Yeah, we talked about it last week because we didn't want the middle school students to be entering the year and not know the answer to that, and the coaches and people who, who make sports happen. So we're taking a chance. There is a public hearing. Do anybody have any questions on these before we move forward to talk about what's next? Mary?
I'm just wondering, even if we got the 161,000, that doesn't add up to 300,000, so.
So the 304,000 is funds that we're holding. Because if you can see, if we were still to have a gap of $161,000, then we would need to reduce one of those, whether it was middle grade sports or a combination of high school clubs and field trips. So it would be a combination of these, of those three items. And so right now, we are, we have been, we have decided to move forward with the fall sports. It doesn't mean that we have a $304,000 gap. It means that we're holding those expenses because we're not sure if we're going to be able to get the 161,000. But a combination of these three items would be impacted in the event that we don't get that 161,000.
Any other questions on this slide? Okay. So we are, do you have another slide you want to show, or is this it on the budget?
This is my last slide.
Okay. So there is a public hearing before the Board of Finance next Tuesday, September 2nd, at 6:00 PM at Town Hall. And the Town Council is going to be holding their regular meeting that night over at the Senior Community Center so that the Town Hall can be used for the budget hearing. So we've rescheduled a couple of our, we're rescheduling a couple of our standing committee meetings that would be happening next Tuesday so that the Board of Ed leadership at least can be at the public hearing. The public hearing is on the Board of Ed budget and the town budget. So there could be any combination of people showing up to talk about one and/or both in the public hearing. At that hearing, the Board of Finance will hear from the public and/or boards, other boards, about their opinions about whether or not the Board of Finance should move forward with the budgets that were set by the Town Council under the Town Charter when the budget referendum failed. So the Town Council set budgets for the, for the board and the town, and the budget that they set for us is 0% for the Board of Ed. The Board of Finance has the option of changing that amount to go to referendum on September 30th. But it sounds highly likely that we will be walking out of the Board of Finance deliberations with a zero budget increase. So I'm encouraging people to go to the hearing next Tuesday, members of the public especially, because they're used to hearing from us. But it would be nice if other people who had some opinion about this came and talked about why it's important to fund public education. And particularly, we might be hearing from some people who have opinions about these cuts that, that are on the table right now. So after that hearing, the Board of Finance can make a decision to make changes or go forward to referendum on September 30th with things as they are now. We are hearing that there are members of the Board of Finance and/or Town Council who would like to give us the $161,000 regardless of what happens with the referendum. So I'm, I'm personally holding out hope that they'll do that. But it couldn't hurt for us to go continue to ask for that 161,000. Anybody have any comments or questions? Mary?
Yeah, I, I don't find the hearings effective, and I think it's a highly flawed system. We're working on their sympathies, so they'll make a different decision. So, you know, and I'm not sure I understand. Are you saying that the Board of Finance can actually give us a 2% increase? And I mean, I, I know this isn't going to happen, but the idea that there's this 161, which thousand that they either might put into the budget above the zero, which is kind of not even a significant increase. Or they're going to say, we're just giving you zero, but then we're going to give you that. I mean, those kinds of practices are not right in my mind. There are some other districts where they're actually taking some legal action because that's not a budget. That's, that's taking money, putting it over here, saying then we're going to move it there, et cetera. You know, so I'm just really upset that we're getting even more convoluted and, you know, more flawed in this process. And I don't think, I, I mean, I would like to know, are you saying that they could actually add any amount of money to our budget on Tuesday?
They have the authority to add, to go to the voters with a different amount as long as it's above 0%. Or they could just leave it at zero and decide to give us money after the referendum out of undesignated fund balance and/or, or extra money, or the Town Council could decide to give us money after the referendum. It's very convoluted, Mary. I agree with you 100% and quite confusing to a lot of the voters that if the Town Council set the budget in June, why are we going to a referendum now? It's actually not necessary, but it is what's happening, and it's very difficult for the Board of Ed right now. I agree on that front. Anybody else?
Yes.
Elda?
So, you know, this, like Mary said, and like we say every year, this is very disturbing that every year we have to beg for the town to give us scraps. We ask for scraps and we get nothing, still get nothing. It just doesn't make sense to me. And all the, the teachers and the parents who go up to the podium and give their testimony, they pour their heart out, and they look at you like it doesn't matter what you say. So it's discouraging to even put something together because, and then they have all this power. It just doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense to me at all. And any cut, especially sports, because that's what's keeping some of these kids out of trouble. Especially when there's not much for them to do and will a mantic, and we want them to get out of their iPads. It's sad because third Thursday, we were out there asking kids if they wanted to play hopscotch. These kids didn't know how to play hopscotch. They don't even know how to set it up. It's so sad because their face is always on the computer or their phone. You see them walking, and they have their phone in their hand, their face down. So we have to fight for no cuts, especially sports. We have to save our kids, and I don't know how to get across to the, to the board, you know, the finance board. And how do we take some of that power away from them? I don't.
Through charter revision or legal action, which is, you know, but between now and September 30th, this is what we have. And, and, and I'm not saying I don't disagree with you, Elda, and that, and I would put forward that a lot of people get upset about sports, but clubs and field trips are just as important because not every kid wants to play sports, but they might be part of a chess club or some special quilting club or, you know, whatever the clubs are that the kids are interested in. And field trips are ways for some kids who don't get to go to a lot of different kinds of places to see something different and experience something different. So despite how discouraging it may be, I think it's, personally, I think it's worth making the case for sports clubs and field trips next week on September 2nd. And I hope we don't just focus on sports. I hope we focus on expanding children's horizons and giving them opportunities they don't normally get. And I hope it's not just staff from central office. I hope other people will come and say something about this.
We need more parents up there, and you're right about.
Well, it's discouraging for them, too, but yeah, if people can come, please do.
And I wanted to add to that, to what I was saying. It is important for all the extracurricular activities that they have after school that will keep them out of trouble, because you're right, a lot of kids don't even do sports. But yes, you're right, so we have to fight. And I still will come up there and give a testimony. And urge the other parents to do so, too.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Lynn?
Yes.
Paula? I spoke to a teacher the other day who said she had a student come up to her and ask her if she would volunteer to continue the drama club at the high school because it meant so much to her. Teacher was struggling.
It's heartbreaking. Well, they need to hear those stories. Any? Anything else? Okay, thank you. So now we're on to action items and we're sort of at a disadvantage because the Chair of our Policy Committee, Katina, couldn't be here with us tonight. Is there anybody who could fill in on running through these repeal of policies that were, well, I'll entertain a motion first.
So moved.
To repeal policies, item B, 1 through 8. And that, motion made by Brendan. And is there a second? Second by Mark. Now, are there any questions and hopefully somebody can fill in if there are questions. This information was shared with us. Mary?
These look very straightforward and there is actually an explanation right after them. So, you know, unlike some of the updates where we might want to look at the statute or something, this does not look like it involves that. So I would be okay repealing them, but.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion that's on the floor to repeal these policies, B, items 1 through 8, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous, thank you. I would entertain a motion, I'm about to sneeze, to approve transfers in the amount
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mark, seconded by Paula. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please indicate by raising your hand. Motion approved. Now we're on to public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment? Mia, would you like to introduce yourself to us? You can come up to the podium there. Don't worry about crossing in front of us, it's fine. And you just press the mics so the green light shows. Speak into it, there.
Hi, everybody. My name's Mia Matoma. I'll be joining the Board of Ed at the next meeting, sitting at the table. I live here in Willimantic, but I've lived in the greater area. I was in Mansfield since about 2008. So I have a couple of kids, they're not kids anymore, they're more young adults that have been, that have gone through their whole education in Connecticut. I was born and raised in California but have since moved to Connecticut. So, yeah, we live locally. I'm a former teacher, taught since 1999 and stopped teaching in 2016. I currently work in public health, in local public health. So I do environmental inspections and such. So I look forward to bringing kind of these areas together, just teaching and health with a sustainable approach. So I look forward to joining you all. Thanks.
Welcome, Mia.
Thank you, Mia. We'll see you, see you when you're sworn in. And thank you for coming tonight and I know you were online at a previous meeting too. So thank you. Anybody else want to speak during public comment? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:53.
I move, we move.
Meeting adjourned.